I'd like to welcome you to the March 4, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Albany County Commissioners. I would like to call the meeting to order. Both are?
Here.
Hough?
Here.
Jones, here. Can you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is a public hearing for GD subdivision preliminary and final plat application SD 04-24. Would anyone like to make public comment? Either online or in person for the GD subdivision preliminary and final plat application SD 04-24. Okay, last chance. Anyone like to make public? Comment on or for the public hearing of GD subdivision preliminary and final plat application SD 04-24. Hearing?
Move to close the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four is comments from the public. And it looks like we have quite a few people that might be making comment today. So I brought this new, modern. You have up to five minutes, so when the last sand drops, finish your sentence. Okay. Come on up Mitch.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mitch Edwards. I'm with the Law Firm of Nicholas and Tangium here in town. We represent Michelle White, Mariah White, and her husband Stephen Van Gaden. And we're here today to express some concern that we have regarding the Connect Gen Railtie Wind Farm project. As you probably saw, we submitted a letter to you, I don't remember if it was last week or a couple of weeks ago, but fairly recently with some of our concerns about what's going on. And the reason why the folks are really concerned that live out in this area that are impacted is because construction has started. And by that, I mean that it appears to us that they're out moving dirt where the location of roads and they're out digging holes for the location of wind turbines. The concerns that this raises is with respect to the conditions that were put on their permit by Albany County in order to be approved to locate a wind facility in this location. The ones that we raised in our letter to you, the primary one is the lack of a site plan that complies with the requirements, so that we even know if they're meeting any of their requirements whatsoever. And as you saw in our letter, the statute requires, once there's approval for the commissioners, to require that a final site plan be provided, and that has not been provided. Why is that important? Because it appears to us, based on the information that we have, which is the site plan that their approval was based on, that that does not comply with the setbacks that were required for the safety of the citizens. And given that, they should not be constructing until they have a site plan that's in compliance with those requirements. And we know with certainty that there are not going to be any turbines located within a mile of any residence dwelling. There are not going to be any turbines located within the setbacks of the requirements for the roads and those types of issues. Additionally, it's important to sort out from that site, final site plan, other things, such as whether or not there's going to be violations of the regulations with respect to noise, where those are located with respect to submission for ADLS approval for lighting. They have to know the locations of those turbines in order to get approval from the FAA, not only for their no determination letter, but also for their marking and lighting requirements. I brought with me today for you all a current status map, from the best we can tell, that was derived from our research with the FAA. I know my client, Mariah White, submitted a letter to you just recently. And in that, she has a link that can take you to the database, the archival database, with respect to the FAA for figuring out what towers have been approved and what their status is. This particular map on the front is our taking the data from that website and the records with respect to the FAA and then putting those on a Google Earth imagery. The green boxes are turbines that Connect Gen has received ADLS approval for. The red turbines are ones that have no ADLS approval. Now, the irony of this is they, it appears to us that they've currently dug 10 holes in that northwest portion of the site here. And the 10 that they have dug are all turbine locations that have not had ADLS approval, from the best that we can tell. Now, I just want to show you where we got this information from to create this map. If you turn to the next page, what you'll see is a screenshot of the website. And for each of the turbines that were applied for, there's an overview results sheet such as this that shows the study dates, the prior study dates, the status. And then there's, you'll see there, there's letters and there's determination letters. That's determination of no hazard. There's extensions for the extension dates for their approval. And then there's marking and lighting on some of them. That marking and lighting is what it talks about the ADLS. But if you just look down, you can see that this is a railtie wind project. It gives the exact location farther down and structure details for latitude and longitude. That's how we use to provide those little boxes. And then you'll see on this first one, I have circled there to bring to your attention the Aircraft Detection Lighting System approved with conditions. So this particular turbine that we gave you the example here was approved for ADLS, but with conditions. And those conditions are in the marking and lighting PDF that was attached. If you turn to the next page, you'll see that that particular item, there is no marking and lighting. There's just a determination. And if you look down farther, you'll see that there is no ADLS approval listed on that one. That one does not have ADLS approval. So I see my time's up, but we would just wanted to bring that to your attention and ask you to send correspondence to Connection telling them to cease and desist their construction activities until they have provided evidence to this county that indeed they're in compliance with their permit.
Thank you Mitch. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Online, is there anyone that would like to make public comment?
Yes, this is Brian Carpenter.
Welcome, Brian.
Hello, and I did send an email kind of tagging on to Mariah White's email. I think I gave some pictures of our residence that one of the wind turbines is less than a mile from. Apparently, either it was not known, although we've had our permit, I think, for about two years for the septic system. But I showed, you know, it is a close to 1,000 square feet, if you count both levels, residence. And it is our home there that we are working on. So I don't know how that was not taken into account, you know, what the information flow was about where there were residences. But, you know, just my general concern I wanted to add on, and I appreciate the attorney's comments who just finished talking. I'm very concerned in the long term about my and my wife's ability to live there and not have health effects. And I believe I've heard that they're trying to swap in an even more monstrous model of wind turbine than the one that was approved. So I don't know that for sure, but seems like they shouldn't be able to do that. And so I just, I wanted to participate in the meeting to just kind of, you know, say some comments about my personal situation in this. Thank you, that's enough for now.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else like to make public comment? Come on up.
Thank you. My name's Mariah White, if you probably already know me. But I just wanted to highlight and piggyback off of what Mitch said a little bit about the noise and the noise regulation. So this is not just a condition that has been specially placed on the railtie wind project. It is an actual county regulation that's on the books for all wind projects. And they, it is up to them to provide proof to you that they're not going to break the noise ordinance, which is to never exceed 55 decibels unless it's in a unique event. So if it's momentary, then it's okay, but not consistent. And so in my letter that I provided you, there is a map of what they presented to the commission and to the planning department as proof that they would meet the noise ordinance. But on the map that they actually provided you, they proved themselves that they're going to break the noise ordinance in 12 different locations. Those 12 turbines need to move, otherwise they're going to break the noise ordinance. And not only that, but the the noise study was done at a wind speed of 22 miles an hour. Now, those of us that live out there know that the average, the average might be 22, but sustained wind speeds of 50 miles an hour are quite common. And the turbines are going to get a lot louder when it's, when the wind speed is a lot higher. So this is extremely negligent of them to try to pass this off as proof of meeting this noise ordinance. So therefore, until we have a site plan that actually does meet the noise ordinance, until we have a site plan that proves that the setbacks are in place for the public safety, then I ask this commission to halt construction because they technically do not have a permit from the county.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make public comment? Yes, come on up. Good to see you today.
Thank you. It's hard to get here so much. And I'll be as brief as I can be. I have taught religion and science at several universities, not just the University of Wyoming. But I wanted to talk a little bit and very briefly about two principles. One is that gravity still works, so no matter what we do, there's still things that happen. And the other is that water flows downhill. So I've lived at the Buttes, we have a cabin up in Albany, and I've lived in there for 40 years. But all of us have to deal with good neighbors. So I'm asking you all with a conscientiousness to think about what regulations can be upheld? And what are you here for to say, we will put this in place and do our best? When I lived at the Buttes for three years, there were two people that lived out there earlier than my husband and I moved there that said, oh, here's a hill no one from 287 can see behind this hill, let's dump our trash there. Well, guess what? More people moved into the Buttes and that trash got buried, but it's still out there. So there are reasons for safekeeping our regulations. And I really hope that each of you could say, wait a minute, this is a reasonable regulation. And common sense says, let's do our best. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to make public comment? Anyone else online? Going once? Twice?
Chair, move to close the public comment.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do I have any disclosures this morning?
Not for me, Madam Chair.
I do have disclosure. The person seeking the plat application is a neighbor, so I'm going to exclude myself.
Good, item number is up?
10. Yep.
And I have no disclosures today. Item six, consideration of changes to the agenda. Bailey?
All right, questionnaires. I did send you guys an email yesterday, I need to add an item. I find they got final work in the city, so I just need to add this because it's due at noon today. It's an application for the Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program through USDOT. And if we could add it towards the beginning with my other items, just in case this meeting goes long, I can have time to get up there and submit it.
You're kidding, right?
Aye.
Should be.
You never know.
Add it, we'll add it to nine.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I spoke with Sheriff Applehands this morning, and he would like to move number 14 to the end of the agenda, if that's possible. He is at CIT training, and if he does not make it back, I will cover that for him. But to give him the best possible chance to make it, if we could move it to the end.
So shall we do 19A?
Perfect, thank you.
So we'll do 19A and 9A.
Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I have a motion to pause the changes of agenda.
Yeah, move to close the changes and move to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Regular agenda, item eight, present for approval, application for Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success for the Communities and Tribes. AL number 93.243 for the Laramie Town and Gown Wellness Initiative from September 30, 2025 through September 29, 30, or 2030, Bailey. Oh, it's not going to be good. All right, good to see you guys.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Anne. I currently run the Town Down Project, and that is what we are hoping to sustain and build more infrastructure around our Town Down project here in Laramie. And that's what this grant would be for. We've, Town Gown is truly connecting dots in the community where the town and the gown meet. And when I say gown, all of our higher ed institutions and our community. This has typically been run with prevention dollars because we have dollars. We started talking about this initiative because of prevention. Just our students touch the community in a lot of different ways. And a lot of times it intersects with things that we can do with prevention dollars. We would like to extend that. And currently, we've been working with the Albany County Housing Coalition. That's one of the initiatives under the Town Gown. We have some safety, traffic and safety initiatives under Town Gown. So it's not just prevention, but that's the dollars that are out there. So one of the difference with this grant and the grant we currently have for prevention is really building that infrastructure within our community. Is, it is different than COPSA, than our local coalition. We are just working on things that really do touch all of our higher ed institutions as well as the community. For example, there's a training we'd like to do, it's called Connect. And it's connecting all of those agencies around traumatic death in a community. We were specifically looking at suicide topics when we decided that we wanted to write this grant or as a piece of this grant. And so, and that is really connecting everybody so that when there is a traumatic death in our community, the community is aware of it and we know how to deal with it together as a community and not just in our silos. It happens a lot, and we all would like to find a way to work together better. And so just giving us that infrastructure to come together, three higher ed institutions, the county, the city. We all meet every other month and talk about all the different ways that having the population that we do from our three higher ed institutions, how it touches our community, how it changes our community, how it makes our community better, and just the things that we can do to continue to do that. Some of the other initiatives are, you know, being good neighbors, teaching students to be good neighbors, and helping our community understand that we would, they could be the role models for what a good neighbor is. And so when these students leave Laramie and they move on to another community, they are good stewards of their community. So we're hoping that a lot of that is what we do with Town Down, is truly teaching our students, our people that come here to learn how they can be better stewards of a community. So that's a big piece of the Town Down initiative. And this grant will help keep that moving forward. And we have several projects under it that we would like to continue that wouldn't just be prevention dollars in this grant. So I didn't know if I needed to add to that.
Sure. Just a, just a quick note about this grant, it is prevention based, just, you know, you know, just to make it known, there is no overlap with the current prevention programs that are already happening. So everything that we've written into the budget for this grant does not interfere, conflict, overlap with my current prevention programs.
Based on the goals that you've put in your application, are these realistic? You've got 30% achievement, use of the app, that kind of thing. Are those realistic goals?
I think so, I do. We've been working with, like, the app that we've been working with. The university is already sort of talking about the app. This would extend the app use to our other two higher ed institutions. And we're just, the information from Man Therapy is the group that actually created the app after, in response to Suicide CSU. So this is truly created for students on campuses so that they can connect with each other. It's a proven evidence-based strategy to reduce suicides on campus. And YOTech is very interested, and so is LCCC. And 30% of their students is very different from 30% of UW students, so.
I was just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, it is an ambitious number, but we really are trying to find ways to connect all of our students better to one another as well as other, we've done tailgates with YOTech, LCCC, and UW. So we're really trying to connect our young people in our community. So YOTech isn't in a silo, and UW is not in a silo. LCCC students feel like college students and not just, oh, I'm going to a community college. So the Connect app is just another piece of that, is that.
I just wondered about the percentages.
I think so. I hope so.
And then I have another question. On the ID scanners that you're proposing to purchase, are those going to be gifted to businesses? Because this is kind of where government goes off the rails.
Sure.
We're handing free stuff over, and then a follow-up to that then would be the data collection on those? Who controls that information?
Sure, sure. So in terms of gifting the ID scanners, the last prevention grant that we had, I purchased similar ID scanners, and those are housed at Laramie Police Department.
Okay.
The bars have to check those out.
Do they?
From LPD, yes.
They do?
They do use them, yep. So that was the plan with these ones as well, to be able to check those out. And then in terms of collecting the data, the data that we get from those would be collected by our data analyst that would be hired under this grant. And that's strictly for the, to meet the compliance of the grant. It would collect information about their age and gender, but beyond that, there's no identifying information in that data.
You actually quoted that it would frequency and.
Frequency, sorry, yep. Yep, so it would, it would tell you how many times that patron has been to an establishment.
Okay. And that becomes public information at that point?
No, it would stay confidential.
Under what auspice?
The grant, do you have any ideas? The grant would just, you know, require us to keep that information confidential. It would just be the confidentiality statements that we submitted with this grant application.
Okay, good. And then I guess, I'm sorry, do you guys have other questions?
Go ahead.
How much county dollars go into supplementing this? Is this 100% a federal grant, just to supplement the program that you guys?
Okay. Correct.
Because I think we need to make that very clear that this is, because I got more than plenty of phone calls over the gymnastic or the cheer thing at the last, and people didn't realize that wasn't county dollars. That wasn't necessarily our oversight, that was a recommendation. So I just want to make it very clear that if we're applying for this, it's federal dollars being used in the community as a added benefit, so, yes, okay.
Yeah, just a quick question about the app. If there's a suicide in the community, kind of talk to me about what does that app provide?
Well, and this is really prevention, truly prevention. We are trying to connect our students more. And to speak to that, the Connect training is really that. You know, we've had some instances of student suicides on campus that really truly stayed in the silo. That just perpetuates the stigma of suicide. A lot of students were really upset that they weren't able to acknowledge that. And so this, so the Connect training is really that. We are trying to figure out a way for our community to be informed. We don't have to release names, we don't have to, but give the community so that it's not so, it still feels shameful. We still treat suicide as this hush-hush thing, and it's a fact. We can't do that anymore because it continues perpetuating that stigma of shame and not asking for help. So the app really is encouraging students to reach out to one another, to ask for help. It encourages them to find their friend group and encourages them to find other events that they can talk to. It encourages them to find their safe space where they feel safe. So it really truly is prevention. The Connect is a little bit more intervention. We are truly trying to connect our community so that when things happen, we can respond as a community and help the people in our community deal with a traumatic death instead of hearing about it three weeks down the road or, you know, rumor mill gets started. We are a small town, we all know each other. That rumor mill gets just away from us. And so being able to truly connect our community and find a way to help our community deal with traumatic death instead of just not talking about it or dealing with it a month down the road or. And so the app really is trying to do, before that, we're trying to connect our students and help them find their safe space.
So on the app, do you discuss the traumatic death?
No, the app is truly for students to talk about their life, to connect. The app is not meant as like an app of postvention necessarily. The app is just that, just trying to connect students. We've had a lot of students say they don't feel connected or they have a hard time finding their safe space. The app is truly just like an Instagram, like, I mean, it's them finding another space that they feel safe. But they can talk about their mental health struggles or just their struggles with school or their struggles in life, or, but it also provides resources within our community that would help them connect with resources if that's what they feel like they need.
What are they hearing about the, that you were discussing on a tragic death? The shame and what, how's that being addressed?
Well, the shame is really that intervention, that postvention after a suicide, being able to talk about it as a community instead of not talking about it. Connect is helping your community come together to talk about traumatic deaths so that it isn't.
How and where do they do that?
What?
How and where do they do that?
So the Connect training is a day-long training with community members within our, within our community. We hope to have law enforcement, somebody from each higher ed institution, you know, our Town Gown representatives that are a part of it. And you go through, it's actually a two-day training where you learn how to deal with these things in your community. You all come together, talk about your process, what are the legalities of it as well, so that we all are on the same page. I mean, it's really just coming together around traumatic death in your community and then being able to always have that when we do have a traumatic death in our community. So it's truly a training, and it's called a Connect Team. And so it's your community coming together as a team to be able to respond to traumatic death in the community.
Okay.
And so Tracy, would it be setting up before something like that were to happen, support systems for people that may not have support systems? So that when something happens, they know where to go, where they can talk about it?
Absolutely. And, you know, another thing that we talked about is a lot of our university students, some of our YOTech students and our LCCC students are from Wyoming. And in, in those instances, when it's a Wyoming kiddo, it also gives us the ability to reach out to the communities that they're from and just say, hey, this is going on, this happened, how can we lend support? There are Connect Teams in a lot of Wyoming communities across the state. So being able to connect with them and have those conversations. I mean, we're unique, where a lot of our kids do come here. And so being able to reach out and just say, hey, this is happening. Your community is going to have, also have to deal with a traumatic death in your community, even though it happened here in Wyoming. Those kiddos are from across Wyoming. And we see Wyoming as all, you know, there are kids, they come here, and we hope that we can help in that sense as well.
You keep referring to them as. You, you keep referring to them as kids, but we're talking about adults.
You're right.
We're, we're quantifying how much it costs to babysit an adult in some of these cases.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing against the program or the grant, but we are sometimes quantifying how much it costs to babysit adults in this community.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I have to push back on that. Um, mental health is not babysitting. Uh, mental health is health. Um, and if we had students with broken legs, we wouldn't just babysit them and say, fix your own leg. Um, and, and as a person who deals in this space a bit and understands the confluence between mental health and physical health, there are studies that exist today that if people have two comorbidities, high blood pressure, diabetes, there's trauma associated with those comorbidities. So to understand that they're not part of health, to understand they have a real impact on a person's health, um, is not to be in keeping with the latest that is being discussed. So.
And I have nothing against the mental health portion, but we do have some folks in this community that don't have mental health issues or, um, but we get here and the county gets to deal with the brunt of the, the behavior. So.
If anybody's dealt with eighteen to twenty-five year olds, their-
Oh, I know. They're-
Their brain is-
They're definitely not-
It's a tough age. Yes, yes, for sure.
That precisely is the kiddo part.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, may I have?
I didn't, but, taking a motion to approve, uh, the application as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nine.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, ratified project proposal to Wyoming Survey and Analysis Center for OJJDP, FY twenty-five State Domain Plan C Prevention Grants Program.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Um, Sam is unable to make it. He called me this morning right at eight AM, but he got a hearing scheduled at ten AM. So, um, but he said he could probably be here after his hearing about ten thirty, ten forty-five, if you guys have additional questions that I can't answer. A quick background for this, the reason this is a ratification is because, um, it was not Monday, the week actually before I left my trip, I got a call from Sam wanting to apply for these funds. We had no idea what was going on. Um, come to find out they were pass through funding through Y SAC. Um, and they were in a hurry to get funding out. So as of, it's, what you have in front of you is a proposal. Um, I talked to Brooke Benson, who's over at Y SAC now in regards to what exactly she wants, what's the application like? And it was very informal. So the bottom line of this grant or the, this funding would be to, um, this is a program Sam, um, has some experience with. Um, he used to work for Big Brothers, Big Sisters and saw that this was a hole um, and felt that this would be a way to can, um, to find a filler for, not a filler, like a connection there. Um, and he called it camp, a court-appointed mentorship program. Um, basically what we'd like to do is we would like to, we would like to accept the funds because we're the county, the local, uh, entity and then pass through those funds to, or contract with Big Brothers, Big Sisters to perform the services. Big Brothers, Big Sisters would then hire, uh, what we're calling a case manager. And then those would go to wages, benefits, and then there'd be some money for, um, youth recreation for this, uh, program. Um, Sam did want me to let you know that this is, um, the, what state statute says is we need to go with the, comply with the least restrictive. Jennifer can hopefully help me with the wording. I comply with the least restrictive and this is just another form of that. I wouldn't deal with juveniles. Correct. Okay. So if you have questions, I can try to answer. Jennifer might be able to help me out too. Or we can wait for Sam if you guys have some questions that we can.
I don't have anything.
No, no comments or questions. Um, we have a motion, please.
Just, we need to move to ratify the project proposed for Wyoming, uh, Survey and Analysis Center for the OJJDP fiscal year twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Bailey, thank you. Bailey. Item nine-eight.
Yeah.
Um, present for approval application for U, US Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistant Pilot Program, ALN twenty-nine four-three, not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Skyline Road Planning Project.
So, um, this project you guys have actually seen in front of you quite a few times already, cause I'm determined to find some funding for it. So, um, I had a call with the state budget office, who also has a grant office component now. Um, and DOT was on that call and they said, this is actually one of the programs that's still moving forward. So I looked into it a little further. Um, it is a pilot program. I mean, it's something they're putting together, um, to help rural and tribal communities, but it is still open at this point. Um, they have a few different categories in it, however, we only fit into that first category. Um, so, and the, the maximum we could apply for is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So one of the things we had talked with Jake about and Rob and the city, um, and YDOT prior to would be the big overall project of thirtieth street going all the way out and over I eighty, connecting to Skyline and Skyline all the way through. This is not enough money to do the whole planning piece of all of that, especially because of that, the, um, passover, um, of I eighty. So I talked to Jake and we were like, well, why don't we kind of go back to our original plan, which is Skyline? So we, Jake drew up numbers for that and he's like, Bailey, I think we could do the city portion of Skyline as well, getting a plan for the, um, the rebuild, I guess, of that portion as well. So we can do, I reached out to the city and this is why I had to walk it on today. I finally heard back from the city yesterday that they would like to be included. There is no match involved with this funding. This is a hundred percent funding and it is for the planning portion of Skyline Drive, the city, what the city currently owns, and then what the county would, um, build prior, just the planning portions, not the construction portion. The hope is we get this funding, we do the plans and we apply for raised funding, um, in the future as long as it's still available. Questions?
Do we have a cost on what the total planning would be?
Just total for this?
Just to know how much is still left hanging out after the seven-
For the thirtieth and yeah. So, um, Jake quoted me, when we did the reconnect application last year, it was about two million dollars. Jake, Rob, and I feel that if we could get a portion of this, it's better than nothing. And this, this project is going to be piecemeal together. There's, especially if we want to try to get as much federal funding for it as possible, there's no way around that. Um, unfortunately at the federal level, yes, they have things like this that do encourage rural communities, which the entire state of Wyoming is considered rural in DOT's eyes. Um, but then it, they say that and then they still fund elsewhere.
And this is all funding through federal DOT?
Correct. It's, yeah, yes, DOT.
Is it Wendy at YDOT that administers this program?
No, no, this, this is a direct DOT.
Okay.
Yeah. No, um, it's not passed through the state at all.
I move, uh, approve nine A as presented.
Second.
I need to abstain on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we moved, we've removed ten, right? Uh, no, ten's-
No, ten.
Just for that.
I, I just, I, I will-
Oh, you're, you're, okay. Hold on. Present for consideration, the GD subdivision preliminary and final plat application, SD zero-four-two-four. Joe.
Morning Commissioners. Uh, the applicant and owner is Monica Maronis, addresses thirty-one Osprey Road. Uh, the request is for approval of three lots subdivision preliminary plat and final plat on, uh, ten point seven eight acre property, water rule beef provided by nine mile water sewer. Septic systems are being proposed for each lot. No new roads are being proposed. Uh, there were some reviews. Most comments have been addressed. Uh, the applicant has provided a complete preliminary and final thought application, including all required documentation and reports. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously that the Board of County Commissioners approve the GD subdivision preliminary and final plat application, SD zero-four-two-four, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Any comment?
Yeah, um, Joe, thank you. Um, on page one sixty-nine of the packet, the subdivision is ten point seven six acres and then there's the western lot is four point seven six acres. The two eastern lots each will be four acres. That equals twelve point seven.
Yeah, the, there's, let me pull it up. So on the plat, which is the important part?
Yeah, it's two, seven, six, four.
Yeah. So that's the correct number.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any inconsistency that would cause people this, this problem.
Yeah. So the plat is the, is the, the correct, okay, numbers.
Let me have a motion.
I move that we approve, um, the TD's subdivision preliminary and final plat application as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item eleven, present for consideration directive to publish amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution, zoning district amendment process and schedule a public hearing for May sixth, twenty twenty-five. David, good morning.
Morning, um, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So what you have before you is, is a request to publish, um, these amendments. These amendments are to the zoning resolution. They essentially add a separate process to our zoning district amendment process that we have now. Currently our zoning district amendment process looks at, it's specifically for a property owner or a few property owners that want to rezone a little area. Um, but we don't have the process written out, um, for the, like a general rezoning of the county or, um, if we're looking at like a big area like aqua protection overlay zone, we don't have a process specifically spelled out here. I mean, what we usually follow is the Administrative Procedures Act, um, which we just go through that process. But this spells it out. It provides, um, ways to notify people of that. And, and then we, um, renamed the processes, the, the, the process that you see when we bring applications would be considered adjudicative. And these are legal terms from, from those types of folks or whatever. Um, yeah, those people. No, but Matt, Matt helped with this. Um, but adjudicative, um, zoning district amendment. And then we, the other one would be known as a legislative, um, zoning district amendment. So that's what we're, we're hoping to get published and, um, scheduled for a public hearing. Yeah.
David, these would be out for forty-five days. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Any questions or comments?
No, I move that we, um, direct the published amendments, uh, for the, uh, zoning resolution as presented.
Second.
Schedule a public hearing for May sixth. Excuse me. Oh, you're good. Yeah, I'm just trying, yeah.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Present.
You're up again. Yeah.
Yeah. Present for consideration directive to publish amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution, zoning district amendment process and schedule a public hearing. I just do this one?
No, they're two separate.
Oh, okay. I-
Different things, similarly.
Okay. So I just reread eleven. So I need to go to, okay. Present for consideration directive to publish amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, schedule a public hearing for May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Thanks, um, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So what, so this again is a direct, we're asking for the ability to publish and schedule a public hearing for these. What these will do, there's three different sections that they affect. Um, section four, which are the standards for site plans. Um, we don't really have much in the way of site plan regula, or, or what we have in there on, on our rate, our applications, we have a list of things that we need for our site plans. What we're doing is we're taking that and putting it into regulations. So we have standards in regulations. Um, and then section six is our zoning certificate application. It basically says, you have to get a zoning certificate for the app, application. So we're adding what the applicant has to do and then some of those standards. Um, and then we've, we've done some amendments to the conditional use application as well. So basically what we're doing is, um, trying to put in what we're doing into our regulations so that they're, they're codified and if anybody ever questioned our application, we can say, well, it's in our regulations. So that's what we're doing with this one. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Is this going to result in better building process out in the county?
Um, it will result in us being able to enforce our regulations better, um, because we're going to be requiring information so that when somebody does something, they know that this is what they're doing it for. This is the use they're using it for. Right now, we don't really have that. We have a lot of problems with, well, we, we got this barn and we, you know, got it permitted, but then we turned it into a dwelling and didn't tell anybody, which is not okay with our zoning. Um, so yes, I think it will help us with, with what we're doing. So, um, excuse me. So one more, one more thing. I, there is one other change that we would like to add to what gets published, if you guys are okay with it. Um, there's a provision that reads right now, conditional uses are privileges, which must be applied for and approved by the Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. We'd actually like to change it because the, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't necessarily approve it. Um, so we wanted to, to read that, um, conditional uses are privileges, which must be applied for and recommended for approval by the Board of County Commissioners or the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So this is just an adjustment to what it should actually read.
This is in section seven, so it's certificate, definitely use.
Yes.
Can you repeat that?
What, what it's proposed to be?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, conditional uses are privileges, which must be applied for and recommended for approval by the board or by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. So that sort of sounds like to me that it's not going to go to the county commissioners unless it's approved by planning and zoning.
If you just say, recommend by a plan.
I mean, this is what I got from, we, we could change that. We can, we could change it to be applied for, um, and recommended by, just take out for approval and just do recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, cause that would, uh, actually, that verbiage would eliminate anything coming to this board. Um, if-
It was approved again.
Yeah. Sure. That's fine. If, if you guys are okay with that change, then we could just put it as you stated there. So.
Okay. Yes, please.
Yeah. So I'd move that we approve, let's get it, um, approve the publishing, the amendment to the Albany County zoning and planning resolution, chapter five and schedule a public hearing for May sixth with the amended change to include section seven and change, uh, with approval to recommendation. I believe that's line seventy-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Item thirteen, present for approval utility license for nine mile water in sewer district on County Road forty-three Hornsby Road, one point four miles north of Highway two thirty. Rob.
Good morning, uh, Commissioners. This is for a, uh, water line that, uh, so they could attach to a building that was on the other side of the road. So basically they needed a permit to uh, cross the road and then, and, uh, they have a water meter in our right of way also.
So does that, is that before or after that irrigation ditch?
Yeah, yeah. It's right after, it's right after.
Is it for culture flows?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is it right before? Okay. Yeah. I've driven that. Depends upon which irrigation ditch.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost at the end of the road.
Yeah, no, we're, I know the almost at the end of the road part, but that's sort of a relative, uh, comment. So, okay.
Yeah.
I move to, to approve the utility license as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. We're going to move item fourteen down to I, item nineteen A. So we'll skip to item fifteen, present for approval. Karen Sue Bowman's viewer report for the proposed vacation of a portion of eighteen ninety Plumbago Road and Sebeely Road right of way lying north, both north and south of the existing Sebeel Road in Albany County. Jennifer.
Good morning Commissioners. So this is the project that we brought to you a month or so ago, a little more than to have a discussion about that. And rather than doing just that first section, Karen looked about vacating everything both north and south. So the viewer's report you have in front of you is that. Karen looked about vacating everything both north and south, so the viewer's report you have in front of you is that. And her recommendation as viewer is to vacate it, that road was never built. There's no access that's going to be cut off, there's none of those things. So this procedure is a little bit different because we're doing it without a petitioner coming forward, we're doing it as a motion of this board, so this will be the first resolution. If you approve it, then it will direct the clerk to send out the notices to all the affected property owners, like we do for all other vacations. But up until this point, we ordinarily wouldn't have a resolution now, but with this one we would. And then we'd have a second one later if there were any objections or no objections, and then the actual resolution entering the vacation.
So this is essentially a vacation at the county's.
Yes.
No, no other request has been made by anybody?
We had inquiry from somebody else when we looked at it. That's when we looked at it and said, rather than the chairman or commissioner goes, rather than doing just this little piece, we may as well vacate everything here and here, so.
And that was your reference to the, I believe when we appointed the viewer, that you were going to do this in sections, and now they're, she's just.
We just did all as well, because there were no issues that arose during that process.
Well, and this, the documentation goes back to
Eighteen ninety.
Territory of Wyoming.
Yes.
So, yeah. No. Uh, move that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-five zero.
Actually, this one's just to approve the viewer's report first, and then we'll do the resolution next.
Okay, well, I'll move to approve the viewer's report.
Yeah, oh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item sixteen, present for approval, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight, initiating vacation of the portion of the eighteen ninety Plumbago Road and Sebeely Road right-of-way located in sections one, two, ten, and eleven of township nineteen north, range seventy-two west of the sixth prime meridian, Albany County, Wyoming, and sections one, two, ten, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two of township nineteen north, range seventy-three west of the sixth prime meridian, Albany County, Wyoming, Jennifer.
Thank you again, Commissioner. So this is the actual resolution that will initiate that vacation. If, assuming that it's approved by you, then we'll take that approval, send out the notices. Then it's just a matter of if anybody objects or claims damages, then we would have a hearing thirty days.
May I have a motion?
Move that we approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item seventeen, present for approval agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Archon Incorporated for Pilot Hill Trailhead Parking.
So what was in your packet was the draft contract?
I was hoping so.
It is, so we had to get it all filled in and get the exhibits all filled in. But really what you're looking at, we have taken the pieces of it that are there, I can, I'll email you this new one out, Sarah is also here to answer any questions. But we took that draft contract because the original contract that we did is the EJCC, EJCDC contract, which is the engineering standard, national standard kind of contract. So this is the contract that actually goes with it. So it incorporates the general conditions and the supplemental conditions and all of the bid processes. These are the contracts that we use on these larger construction projects, interior designs, construction. So I will email you this change or this fully completed version. But everything that you have, everything that's in that draft, we have not deviated from that, we have.
There's nothing in that draft.
Well, I know, but all the, there's all the important sections are in there, right?
Okay.
We've already approved the bid, we know how much the bid is. This is just really, I'll send this out, but there's nothing else that we have added in other than the potential draft language that is there.
Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer's correct in her assessment of this. This was an interesting process for a learning opportunity for both Jennifer and I, I think as we went through this. Down, getting down to the nuts and bolts, as you might recall, a month ago today, you did approve the bid from Archon Corporation for this trailhead project. The total contract price is two million thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. As you know, there's a million dollars that we've secured to the Wyoming Outdoor Rec Grant for this. The other one million thirty-two thousand six forty-seven has been secured through a variety of sources, both private and, and funding that was pledged to us by both the county commission and the city of Laramie. And then the remaining four hundred and thirty-three thousand is dedicated from the Pilot Hill organization from private donations and grants. I did bring minutes of both the Pilot Hill Board meeting and the city council meeting, if you need to have verification of those commitments. But the cost of this is fully funded. We look forward to working with Archon and, and breaking ground, hopefully there within the next couple of months and having a fully util, usable trailhead for the community to enjoy this summer.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, I'm just looking over the.
The one I just sent you?
Yeah.
It's difficult for me to, to, questions about things I haven't seen. But I have to tell you, there's some language in here about a bonus.
No, that, so that was actually removed. If we, if you, do you have access to the one I just sent you?
I probably do.
Okay, I just sent it. We pulled out all the information about the bonus, those optional things in there. We have the liquidated damages provisions in there. Those are the provisions that if they don't get, there's their substantial completion, there's the daily charge for every day over. We pulled out all the language about milestones because we are not using a milestone, we are using the dates for substantial completion rather than milestones within the project. Let me pull up the template one here too. And.
And I guess just my concern is when the north project was done here on the courthouse, it took months to get the punch, maybe closer to a year to get the punch list done, and there was no impetus for the contractor to finish that because there were no monetary damages that were applied to that same contractor that is in this contract. And so I don't want to have to do that because it was a pain.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Cosar, we do have a five hundred dollar per day fee on the contractor if he goes past the completion date. So we did take your advice seriously and made sure that we had that in this contract.
And we did not, in some construction contracts, after you hit substantial completion, like substantial completion is until you get there is five hundred dollars a day. And then after you've hit substantial completion to five hundred, or till final completion, oftentimes it'll be a reduced amount, we did not reduce that amount, it's a five hundred dollar per day if they go over the final completion date as well to ensure that all of those punch list items are taken care of between the substantial completion date and the final completion date. And if they're not, after the expiration of the final completion date, that five hundred dollars a day comes back in again.
And you're doing a, it looks like a five percent retainage?
Yes, up to ten percent is allowed by state statute. And the retainage payments goes through all the statutory processes as well, where for that final payment, we have to make application and do publication to make sure all the subcontractors are paid and all of those things that happen on a statutory level.
In the future, it'd be nice to see the, the final product. I, you know, I suspect we've been through this one, the next one I probably won't get through. I have to tell you, if, don't see it, I don't know what we're signing, and I feel very uncomfortable in that world.
And I apologize for that. This came up, I was on vacation, and then Sarah was on vacation, and Archon is in a hurry to get things signed so they can get their subs signed and make sure that we move forward. So we didn't, I didn't want to have to push it out another till the next meeting to do that.
And, and keeping your subs online is like tough business right now.
It is, if they don't have signed contracts, they'll move on to other projects.
Yep. Okay, so may I have a motion on item seventeen?
Do you mind if we take just one more minute?
Nope, that's fine.
Commissioner, are you able to see this?
The assurances are fine.
Okay.
If you feel, feel that it covers it, that I'll.
I mean, we could take a ten-minute break if you'd like.
Yeah, certainly can.
Yeah, actually, can we adjourn for five minutes or ten minutes to just one page, four, and I'd like to see all seven?
Um, we will take ten, fifteen minutes, which do you want?
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute, um, break. Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Um, I'd like to call the meeting back to. I'd like to call the meeting back to orders. Okay, so we will continue with item 17.
I move that we approve the agreement as emailed to us um for the Pilot Hill Trailhead Party. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 18, present for approval. Thank you, Sarah. Present for approval proposal 02252025E1V1 between Arca Search Digital Archiving and Albany County, Wyoming for Commissioner Minutes addition to the existing site, research site in the amount of $412. Kayla.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a contract between Albany County and Arca Search to host. So what they already do, they host all of our digitized records from the land documents and all of the commissioner records. So all of the old commissioner books and then anything up to current. So basically what this is doing is just adding the current minutes onto their website so that they host that. And we'll, you'll probably see these trickle throughout the year as we get those commissioner minutes of. But this will get us up to date with all of our commissioner minutes on the Arca Search site. Do you have any questions?
Is this something we don't do ourselves or can't do ourselves?
So because they host our, all of our um all of our documents, they host the site.
So this is just an additional contract?
It's just an additional contract for them to load them up there. It's for them to load them on there and then to host it. I think if you can see, it's like $9 to increase the annual fee.
I saw it was like bittens.
Very minimal. Once everything's up there, then it is. We'll conditional or we'll continue to have additional costs for the commissioner minutes, obviously, because we continue to have minute or meetings. All of my documents that are in my office, all of our land records, we just do the hosting fee every year because they're all done now. So.
I move to approve item 18. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Kayla. Item 19, request budget directive from the Board of County Commissioners fiscal year 2025-2026 Albany County Budget.
All right, Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's budget time. And as you all know, uh, you know, the legislature is just getting ready to be done regarding property taxes. It looks like the bill for the 25%.
1.3, 1.4?
Mm-hmm. Um, I, Tracy is out today. Um, I will get with her and with Chelsea and we'll get some hard numbers as to what that looks like. But I'm asking you for your budget directives so that I can send a memo out to all the department heads and elected officials so that they can get their budgets submitted to my office by May. Um, but I'm asking for you guys what you would like me to put in the memo to all of the department heads um for this budget cycle.
It's a good question.
It's a really good question.
Because we have gone just previously that you probably know, but uh we have gone just flat budgeting and then with any additional stuff to, to bring a two or three sentence uh item that says, hey, this is why we need a law. But in light of the 25%, um, I'm not sure when the governor either signs or vetoes when that day is up. 10 days, I think if he doesn't sign, then it goes into law. I wonder if there'll be challenges because constitutionally, um, everybody should be taxed equitably. And I don't know that that does that um when you cut it off at $1 million. Can you give us 10 days?
That's what I was gonna add. That was perfect. I think we need.
And what we can do too, so I look at the statute. I have to get my budget. I have to request, I have to ask you to request it. So yes, I, you guys can give me some, or give some time. And we could um maybe at the next, look at that statute. I'm pretty sure we're okay. Uh, my other thought is, is we can say flatline right now. And if you guys have to come back and say, everybody needs to cut X amount of percentage out of their budget, we can do that too. There's nothing saying.
Well, that gives everybody an opportunity to work on it a little bit.
Yeah, it doesn't say that we can't come back. Um, I should have looked at that. Have to pull that statue, I guess. If Tracy was here, she probably would. Um, I can probably look at my memo real quick. I got it kind of ready. Um.
So 1.3 million is approximately 5% of the county's current budget. So I guess with that in mind.
I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna feel, obviously, we're not gonna feel it this year. We're gonna feel it next year.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I would like to say conservatively, I would rather cut some this year and cut some next. I don't want to have to cut it all next year and go, oh, we're in a pickle. I would rather very, very lean.
Adjust quickly and.
Adjust now and then if it means we don't have to adjust as much next year, I would feel much better about that. Um. I just don't know what percentage you guys want us to look at. And you could just say, look at cutting this, you know, like what would it look like to cut 5% out of your budget? Where would you take that? You know, and ask every department to say, where would you take that from your budget? What does that look like for your budget? Some departments may not be able to cut 5% because that might mean people. And I, I personally um will do everything in my power to do anything in my budget other than people.
Well, I mean, point to Rob and I asked, he's, he and I have had a conversation. Well, if you remove one person from his staff, then he's got one extra piece of equipment sitting there doing nothing. Or if you give rid of the piece of equipment, then so it's all paired up. And I think his department's probably taken as much of a hit and be able to.
Took huge hits in the past.
And be able to provide the, I will call them bare essential services.
There's a lot of departments that haven't come back from 17, have hired back people.
So I don't know if we need to look at um department pooling or I, I think you guys probably already would cooperate in that regard anyways.
We do what we have to do to keep our people.
I think um the assessor is also gonna need some additional folks temporarily to reclassify some property types um based on the verbiage.
Yeah.
So um in that regard, I, I know there's some looking at um office space consolidation or looking where any spare facilities are. So.
Yeah, I, I think that legislation has consequences. And I think that people telling us what those consequences are so that the populace can understand.
Yeah.
This is what it looks like. And if it gets worse than that, then um this is a person. Um, and or this is a sheriff or this is fire uh response. Or this is snow plowing over a road that's way out of town. That we have to have make that connection. Um.
I agree.
Because I don't believe people have made that connection.
Services are equal to.
Yep.
Funds. So.
I don't know. I, I'm okay with the waiting 10 days and um just to.
Let's have everybody look at, you know, do you want everybody to look at like 5% what that would look like in their budget? Nobody's gonna be submitting their budgets today. So it's not like, I just like to be able to send the budget directive out so that people can start thinking about it.
Also include what Bailey's doing with what we need for structure and space. Um, if there's a cost savings to a different building type or location. I finally went up on the fourth floor the other day because I hadn't been up to Circuit Court in a while and noticed why there's no space on the fourth floor anymore. Um, I didn't realize they had an additional courtroom up there now.
That's been up there forever and ever.
You can't say that. I was up there when the jail was up there. That was.
That was a long time ago.
At least the last 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I got rid of Matthew Shepard evidence when that trial concluded up in that jail.
Did you?
Back in 01.
I was gonna say, that was a long time ago. I was in high school.
I, I do remember trying to get all the levers to work to get the dang doors open. So yes.
I was just, that's been there for as long as I remember practicing.
That, okay.
Yeah, whatever you and Tracy feel like, if that thing, if that law goes into or whatever that percentage is.
Okay.
I, I would like people to start working on that. Um, because we have to start working on it.
I know. I don't, I don't, I would rather start working on it.
Departments have to have a budget request submitted by May 1st.
Okay.
And I have to just request the budget directive from the commissioners.
Yeah, I was looking.
By this date.
Haven't gotten that far.
Yeah, so we're okay. I, I mean.
You've requested.
I think I requested it. That doesn't mean you guys have given it to me. So.
Oh, I thought we just did it.
Well, you did. I mean, but if you want to wait a little bit and we can, that's the hard thing is you kind of have to wait for things to fall into place and we don't know what that looks like yet. So it's a little hard to do that without knowing.
Where it actually is.
Where it actually is gonna fall. So.
I don't know. I'm assuming there's gonna be an additional spending cut on other bills that we haven't quite enumerated just because the veterans exemptions, not everything. We kind of have to wait for everything to be pressed into law before we have a final number.
Yeah. Cause you know, our county has done, you know, the property tax refund program. If people are gonna be getting a 25% reduction, it, is it, it's not cost effective for the county then to do a refund program, you know, so I mean, I think we have to look at a lot of those things um where they're all also be cost savings because that won't be in the budget. But you know, things can even out. But um if you would like me just to look at a 5% right now, what that would look like if we all can just look at our own budgets and say, where can, or maybe just say, everybody needs to look at their budgets and look at where we can cut.
Yeah.
Where we can cut the fat in our budget.
If there's an immediate consolidation that can occur.
What can you do in your, within your budgets? Okay, we'll just do that. Um.
I, yeah, and Commissioner Gosar nailed it. It's, it might be a legal challenge because the Senator from Teton County made the comment that this is laughable. It's only a million dollars.
But for us.
I know for us, yeah. Um.
That's a lot.
Teton County collects an awful lot of property taxes for the 80% of us that.
I know.
Yes. So.
Thank goodness for them, but you know.
Yep. Well, I think there's what, five or seven counties that property taxes have gone down since 2019?
Yeah.
So not only they dealing with less money, but now they're dealing with 25% less. Less. So, um, yeah.
Okay. I will draft something and send it out just to have everybody look at their budgets and where we can cut um within each individual budget. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Do we, we don't need to take any action on that? Oh, we need to go.
Item 19A.
Good morning, young commissioners. So this is, oh, it's here, here. She's here. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't look all the way back again.
I wasn't sure.
We got you moved.
Okay, cool. Uh, so let's see, 19A.
It's 14.
It's 14, yeah.
Uh, this is just to accept an award, the bid to Fremont Motors for the purchase of three police vehicles with trade-ins. So um that bid went out, ooh, about a month ago. Uh, we opened up bids on the 25th. Uh, Fremont Motors was the only one to bid, but they did submit multiple bids based on the way that I wrote it. Um, uh, that was based on the availability of, of vehicles. So.
Was it between Ford and Dodge? Is that kind of what they gave you numbers for?
Uh, they gave me, uh, I believe there was four bids. Three of them were for Fords um and different combinations. I wrote the bids and we'd either get uh two pickup trucks, an SUV or any combination. Um, and that's just based on the availability from domestic markets on vehicles. And so um, so yeah, three of those bits were for um vehicles made by Ford and then one bit was for vehicles made by Dodge. Um, we chose the one to go with the three Ford pickup trucks. That's gonna be the most efficient and economical um bid for the department. And so all we're asking for the commissioners to do is uh accept that, accept that bid, award the bid and then uh sign the, sign the contract that's attached to it as well. So. Guys have any questions?
Hi, Sherrie. Are they gonna have light bars and easy to spot or are we gonna go with the gray and no light bars?
Uh, they will have light bars on them, but they don't. This bid is just for the vehicles with the mechanical specifications. We go and get them outfitted. Um.
That's just for my personal driving techniques.
They, they still will be.
Are the lights in the window or on the top?
That's exactly, I guess. I mean.
Since they've got.
One of his deputies lit up my wife and I was in the passenger seat and she was ready to pull over and argue because she didn't do anything wrong. And I'm like, honey, just get out of the way, please.
Not like.
She wasn't even getting pulled over. It was just.
Headed somewhere else.
Yes.
Those light bars are, are on the top. We only have a few vehicles where the light bulbs are on.
Yes. No, I, I, no, I move that we accept an award, a bid to Fremont Motors for the purchase of three police vehicles uh with trade-ins and direct the chair to sign the contract.
Second.
All those in favor? Ayes, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys for being accommodating to my schedules.
Okay, item 20, executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute 16-4-405AIIII and VII.
I move that we leave regular session and enter executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute 16-4-405B triple I and, and number number seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We move into executive session.
At 10:53.
And then you got to start the recording again in more.
We are returning, make a motion to return to regular session.
I move that we return to regular session.
At 11:46.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aight, aight.
Motion carries. We don't have any, what word do I want?
Action.
I have no action to bring forward from the executive session. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Nope, we need to approve voucher. I move that we approve the vouchers February 2025. Second.
All of them favor? Alright, motion carries.
Now I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know I need to come to the very page. Okay. All those in favor, we're up, we've done that. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming.